Okay, as we discussed in the last previous sessions. We were about to start our regular system configurations, right? Before we do it or before we start our regular configuration. In our previous sessions, whatever we talked, everybody is comfortable, right?
Yes.
From baseline configuration, GL posting. Documentation, different other things, whatever we discussed, right from debit credit onward. Now what we need to do, we have to start looking at the system, we have to start thinking. About SAP FICO in a different way, meaning. Now the target is to ensure you are in a position to configure work confidently on the system. So far what we did, it is only for. Getting screen familiarity, feeling comfortable with SAP FICO, I hope. Which is now comfortable for everyone, right?
Yes.
What is FICO, how it works, what you are going to do in a project and all? You have a basic level of understanding now. From now onward, what we will be doing is, we will be going a little ahead. Understanding practically how we need to practice SAP FICO. In order to become a consultant, point number one. As we discussed, it's all about. Baseline. Configuration. When we talk about baseline configuration. Everybody has got a basic level of understanding on this baseline config. Starting from company, company code until posting a document. Looking at the report and then trial balance. Yes, no?
Yes, sir.
We already did it maybe two, two, three times. But I, all I want you to do is just recollect what we did. Make sure you are familiar with what is what. Though you have not practiced, but still you should feel that yes, I know what is this. That familiarity is there for everyone, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next what we need to do, you, we have two level of targets now. Your target number one. And your target number two. Target number one, what you have to do was. Focus. Only on the. System configuration. With. How many company codes?
Three company codes.
Three company codes. When we say focus only on the system configuration with the three company code, target is only to do the config. For three company codes, understood? Create three company codes. Post a document, see the report, look at the trial balance three times. Here you are not supposed to think whether you are understanding or not understanding, it is immaterial. All you need to do focuses, go to the system, do the configuration three times and then leave it. That's where you get hands-on experience on the screen, understood? Then you should feel yes, if I am talking about a company, company code, chart of account, whatever setting it is. You should feel yes, I know what is this is screen, what is the T code, where to go, how to go, how to add a new entry? How to make? A configuration, how to save it, how to post a document, how to say report, I know, meaning. You will be looking at the target number one like data entry, understood? Other than screen, other than config, other than getting hands-on experience, no other target. Clear it, everyone?
Yes, sir.
Once this is done, your target number two. Focus only on. Business. Requirement. And. Concepts. And. Logics, clear? In the target number one, when you are creating the three company code. You don't have to look at what is the logic, what is the requirement, concept, nothing is required. Blindly you can configure the way we are doing it in the class. But once three company codes are done, you will now have the hands-on experience on the screen, right? So far you have seen to get a clarity now, you will do it to get more clarity, understood? And then we will be discussing on business requirement. If this is the business requirement, how you will configure? At that situation, screen, T code, everything is on your fingertips, right or wrong?
Yes, sir.
You would have already configured now, you start to understand. How to create a company code, how to create a chart of account? How it is created in a project, before we do it in a project, what will be the thought process? What will be exactly done in a project, you will do it what as your level? You will be joining as an associate consultant or a consultant or as a senior consultant. At your level, what exactly you will do in a project, you need to relate everything. Considering your level of experience, if you get a job tomorrow. In your project, whatever you will do is what you need to visualize here. So that whatever you practice from fourth company code onward. From which company code? Fourth company code. First three company code, no focus, no thinking about what is this, why am I doing? You don't even have to think about it. From fourth company code, any error that you get, you need to understand the reason behind every error. You need to understand solution for every error, you need to have a clear-cut business requirement. About what you are doing in SAP. If you do not know, you are not supposed to do anything in the system, no experiment. Right? No trial and error from fourth company code onward. All the experiment, all the trial and error should happen. In first three company code only strictly three, not beyond three, understood? It's not that okay, until I get confidence, I will keep creating ten, twenty, thirty, doesn't, doesn't work out. You should have a strict target, I need to create only three, within this three, I need to be. Comfortable on the system configuration, screen familiarity, confidence. Once the system, we will switch over to target number two wherein you will be focusing on. Business requirement, business concept, SAP FICO concept and then the system logic. Which allows you to think like a consultant, work like a consultant in your practice. Clear for every?
Clear.
Right? Now. In the target number one, you need to be familiar on all the configuration steps. You already know configuration, right? Company, company code, chart of account, fiscal year, everything.
Yes, sir.
Alright, now in this target number one, we will be. Getting a familiarity on all the configurations by practicing the three company code. Now this three company code is your target, not my target. Clear, right? This three company code is your individual target. All of you must create, must configure three company codes. And these three company codes, I will tell how you need to create, what logics to be taken. Not blindly whatever you create, it is not like that, and these three company codes, three. Individual company code, each company code must be completed. Full cycle only then you should go to second company code, understood?
Yes.
Right, it's not like, let's say I am on a screen. Those who are not talking, please make sure you are on mute. If I say company code, let's say if I say chart of account. If I say something like, let's say. Posting period variant. Or field status variant, there are different settings, right, in our configuration? If I go to company code, let's assume that I am deciding to create company code one thousand. Just an example, I decided that I will be creating company code one thousand. Now our target is to create how many?
Three.
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 This doesn't mean at a time you will create one thousand, two thousand, three thousand. This is wrong. You got my point? This is wrong, this is a mistake, which you should not do. You should complete one company code fully until. TB, TB means what? You'll have to configure a company code, do all the settings, do the consistency check, post a document, look at the trial balance, this is one cycle.
Yes.
This is one cycle, this must be first completed. Only after completing the first one. Like trial balance. Only after completing this, you should start. Creating second company code so that. In the first company code, for sure you will make many mistakes, many error, correct or not?
Yes, sir.
When you create the first company code, you will make mistake, for sure you will make mistake. There is no doubt about it, you will make mistake, you will get errors, you will get confusion. Everything will happen in the first company code. And when you do the second company code, make sure. You avoid the first company code errors in the second company code, am I clear?
Yes, sir.
You would have got some error in first company code, no matter where, no matter what is the error. Which we will see in the coming sessions practically. Even when I do the configuration, I will make you understand or we will do the configuration collectively with all the possible errors. When I say we will do the configuration with all the possible error, I will get maximum errors during the session itself. So that during your practice, whatever error you get. Most likely the same error we also would have gotten in the session, right?
Yes, sir.
So if you get any error during your practice, from the class. You would have understood what is that error, why that error is coming, what mistake we made and how do we fix it? You would have understood within the session. And when you do a practice, for sure you will get error. And you have to get errors. If you are practicing but you are not getting any error, then something is wrong. Got my point? While practicing, if you are not getting any error, something is wrong, it's not a good practice. Good practice is always getting errors. You need to get error, you need to understand the error, you need to know where you went wrong. So that next time when you configure the same thing, you understand to do this configuration, we might get this error. To avoid this error, I need to think what should be the requirement, correct or not?
Correct.
Otherwise you will end up creating just like that. But which is not the requirement, the requirement is to ensure. Before you configure in SAP, you should know what you are configuring, for that you should know the requirement. You should know the logic, you should know the concept, which were taking in target number two. Alright, so that the first three company codes is only to get. Your practical experience, hands-on experience on the screen. Then I will make you play with the system by giving different practical requirements. Like the way you enter a project. Whatever tasks that you will be getting from your manager, from your lead, from your senior. In this similar way, I will also be giving you different kind of requirement, which you will be working, meaning. I will give common scenarios, common requirement in this session as assignment for everyone. Then you will all be working on it, for every requirement, I will give you the end solution and result I will tell you, if you do it. This should be the result, I will give you the result, but I will not show the process. Understood, right? I will give the requirement. And then I will, I will show what is the end result, what you are supposed to do. Achieve the requirement with your understanding based on our sessions, right or wrong?
Right, sir.
Right, this is what you are supposed to do, that's where you will see. To what extent you are able to understand, to what extent you are able to configure the system. Independently and what is your confidence level. So that. It allows you to measure your skill set, understand your. Practicality on the system on a regular basis, otherwise. You practice now and then you will be thinking, okay, I will redo it maybe after one month after course completion, shouldn't happen it. You should be progressing, monitoring your. Learning your capability, your confidence level on a regular basis, understood, right? Meaning, your three company codes must be configured in a structured way. Strictly you need to practice the way I am telling you in the class. For the regular class, I will tell you how you need to practice, for your assignment, I will tell you how you need to practice. You got my point, right? Not that okay, I referred the recording, I practiced the way I wanted, doesn't work out, I will tell you how you need to practice. In this similar way you need to practice, only then you understand what you are doing. And every point will be connected to all the subsequent topics which we are about to do in future. If I tell you to do something today. I will tell you to do things in different way which is connected to some other point in the upcoming sessions, understood, right? Not that you will configure today, you will say that okay, this topic is over, no. No topic will have a full stop, every topic will have a comma. So that it will be continued, it will be connected with some other topic as we progress. And coming back to this, you need to configure. First company as an example one thousand, do all the consistency check. Make sure you are not getting any error and wherever you get error, you need to know. Take a screenshot of the error, for example you got an error, take a screenshot. If you understand what is the error, it's okay, but. Some error is like, I am not understanding why I am getting this error, take a screenshot of the error. Make a note in your Excel sheet. Take a screenshot, copy paste it in your Excel sheet and then keep it and then you write down. Why you got that error? Don't go to second company code unless and until you are comfortable with all the errors that you got. Once you are comfortable with the error, whatever you got, go to second company code. When you go to second company code, your first target. Is to ensure the first company code error will not come, correct or not?
Correct.
When you go to first company code, no target, you start creating, you get error. No problem, let the errors come. Every screen you get error, no problem, let as many errors as it comes, it's fine, every error is a. Learning, every error will tell you how to think, how to avoid the problems. List out all the error and before you go to second company code, make sure from your first company code. All the error, whatever you got, you understood. Later on, when you go to the second company code. Your target is first company code error will not repeat.
Yes.
Whatever error that you got in the first company code, which means one thousand company code. It won't be repeated in second company code, if you are getting same error again in second company code. Something that you'll have to rethink, why did you get the same error? How did you configure? Meaning somewhere you made same mistake again, right? You got my point? You already got the error. You understood the error, you found the solution. Next time you are creating and this time you should be careful, right, you should not get the same error again. And if you are not getting the same error, meaning you understood, okay, then you'll have to look at. Before going to third company code, you should do a comparison between. First company code, second company code, in first company code, this is what I did. I got this error. In my second company code, the same settings I did, but this time I did not get any error. Meaning in my first company code while configuring these things, I made a mistake here, meaning I didn't think how it should be created. But in my second company code, I understood, in my first company code, I got a problem here. As a result, before configuring this second company code, this particular setting, I went back and then checked what I decided. What I defined, how I configured. Accordingly, I decided what is to be created and then I created as per the proper logic, then I did not get the error. Meaning, when you are comparing your first company code with the second company code, you should be able to find the differences or not. Improvements or not, what you have done.
Yes.
It shouldn't be the blind configuration, it shouldn't be the blind practice. Alright? Once your second company code is also done, if you got the second company code also problem, no problem, let it come. Because that's where you will slowly start improving, right? Because it takes a little time for all of you to feel comfortable, familiar with the screen, the way you are supposed to do. Okay, and once this is all done, you'll have to go to the third company code, because this is the third company code. Last company code for your target number one, right? Don't take that, okay, until I become expert, I will say do it, don't take that, strictly three means three only. Understood? When we say three, it is strictly three, don't go to fourth, fourth is your actual. Fourth is your actual, where you should start thinking like a consultant and then configure like a consultant in a project. So your trial and error is strictly until the three company codes. Next one, when you go to the third company code, you need to make sure you don't get even a single error. You are not supposed to get even a single error. If you got even a single error, you have to complete the third company code. Put again third company code, but this should be three thousand one. When I say three thousand one. You cannot count it as fourth company code, it is still third company code. Right?
Yes, sir.
Your target is to ensure in the third company code, there is no problem, not even a single error. From a company, company code creation until the trial balance checking. There should not be any error, not even a single error, even if you got a single error. That is failed. So you have to complete that company code, fix all the problem. But your third company code is still pending, this is not counted as third company code. This is eliminated, you have to redo it. You have to redo it, it's like you fail in the exam, doesn't mean you study again, right, you will write supplementary and then pass it, correct or not? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
It's like you failed here, you'll have to pass it here, write the supplementary. Meaning you create one more company code until you turn it. Full green. When you say it is full green, meaning you pass here. This is where you'll have to measure whether your baseline config is okay or not, okay? One-time effort. Whether it is taking one week, whether it is taking attendance, let it take. Because it's a one-time effort. If you are comfortable here, all the upcoming sessions, whatever you are going to practice, everything will be simplified. Because you will be getting so many logics here which are common in any topic. As you move forward, logics, whatever we understand here, everything is common. So nothing, don't, don't look at it like a baseline conflict. It is like your initial hands-on experience on the system, which will be same. Here, which will be same in any project, you are understanding. How to work on the system, you are understanding how to think like a consultant, you are understanding. How you will get the requirement, you are understanding so many points here, you will make so many mistakes. And you will learn so many things here itself. And then once we come to target number two. When I say once we come to target number two, here you are now actually configuring the fourth company code. Which is exactly same like a project.
Yes, sir.
In the fourth company code, this is exactly same like a project. Now from the fourth company code, you will be configuring the system. Assuming you are in a project and then parallely you will be making a documentation. When I say parallely, you will be making a documentation. In the last few sessions, we were looking at a different document, right? That we will have to prepare as a consultant. Configuring.
Yes, sir.
Here you will be preparing a documentation and this documentation. When you prepare it, you'll have to prepare assuming it is your future reference document, which document?
Future reference.
That's your future reference document, meaning tomorrow. When you practice later on, maybe for your interview preparation, maybe after getting a job. You want to revise a topic for any reason. Maybe to brush up, maybe to feel confident, comfortable, let it be any reason. It has to be your future reference document, you have to make. A note of all the important point, key points, whatever errors that you noticed and all. Everything you have to put it in your document, it's your individual document, it is a personal document, clear? From every topic point of view, I will be giving you different interview related important points. I will be telling you from a practical point of view, what could be the support ticket possible here? Because there are certain topic where you don't get any issue in a project. There are certain things which are very, very important from a project, from the interview point of view, right? I will tell you what are all the topics where you'll have to be more focused. So there you will be collecting different information, meaning. Ticket related information, CR related information, CR meaning what?
Change request.
What? Change request related information, ticket related information, service request related information. From interview point of view, what could be the possible question from this particular topic? And from this topic point of view, what we need to understand? If there are any important T codes, table, whatever it is, we will be making a note there. Meaning I will give the input, what you need to do. And accordingly you have to collect the information, make your own future reference document, so that. Even after becoming a consultant, even after getting a job. You will be having a single document, right, for you to refer anytime in future.
Yes.
Alright, and even after you getting a job. Whatever you observe and all, you keep adding in the same sheet, it's like one master file for you, right? Which you are preparing on your own understanding with your own experience, right? That will give you more clarity, that will give you more confidence. As we move forward, what we will do, first we will be understanding how to set up a system. Later on, we will also be understanding how to look at the existing setup system, meaning. If you are setting up a new company code, everything is fresh here, right, correct or not? Newly added.
Yes, sir.
If I say this is the company code thousand. Or I will say that, I will, I will put some other company code, something like nine thousand eight hundred. This is something that is not created by you, right? This is something which is not created by you, assuming this is created by somebody else. Someone else created this company code, all you know is company code is nine thousand eight hundred or. Nine eight zero zero is the company code, now your target will be. If you are joining a project tomorrow, where implementation already completed. Client is already using SAP, you joined as a consultant. Maybe after Goleb you joined. In support you joined or you joined as a somebody's replacement, it could be any reason, right? Now you have to be very clear that yes, whenever I get a job tomorrow. If I join as a FICO consultant, there may be already SAP implemented. There is nothing that I will go create a company code in a project, come out of that situation. It is very rare situation in the current market at your level. So wherever you go, wherever you join, most likely implementation already completed. Client is already using SAP, you will have to go work in a project where SAP is already. In running position, it's already live in use. They say that okay, you will be responsible for company code and I need double zero. Suddenly you will get a call from a user. Or your manager, lead, senior, somebody will tell that, okay, in this company code nine eight zero zero. There is a requirement for bank reconciliation, there is a requirement for tax, there is a requirement for this or. There is a problem in asset, there is a problem in integration, there is a problem in X, Y, Z. Now here, are you going to work on creating a new interest like you practiced?
No, sir.
No, this is something where you should be in a position to. Go into the system, understand on your own or you expect somebody to explain one by one.
On your own.
Right, you are supposed to work on your own, you are supposed to understand the system on your own. This is what is going to happen when you become a consultant tomorrow, am I correct or not?
Yes.
Right, this is what is going to happen when you become a consultant tomorrow, meaning. During your training, during your preparation, during your learning, during your practice, make sure. You come to a stage where you will be in a position to handle this blue line. Blue line is where you have not practiced, right, blue line is where you did not configure the system, right? If system is set up by somebody else, you should be in a position to go understand how it is a setup. Is my point clear for everyone?
Yes, sir. Clear.
If you set up the system, you know what you did. But you are not the one who did the setup, it is set up by somebody else. Now you need to work on this company code, which is a setup by someone else who is not there now. Now it's all about. You are understanding the system and then working, right, not just working. There are two ways here, point number one, you set up, you work. There are two ways here. Point number one, you set up, you work. You are playing dual role, it's okay, you can manage, but here it's not a dual role, right? It's a single role. Set up by somebody else, now you need to work.
Yes.
Before you work, you need to understand, correct or not?
Correct.
Before you work on the system, first you need to understand. So, your focus is more on understanding and then you will switch over to. Working on the practical project. During the training, for sure, I'll make you practice multiple company code to get hands-free. Then I'll give you different assignment, meaning your learning will be in a completely different mode. Not like you will watch recording, you will do it, it is not going to be like that, it's going to be in a completely different way where. You will experience like you're in a project. Understood, right? Now here, the third company code, you need to make sure from your target number one, should be without getting a single error. Even if you get a single error at the last setting, still fail. Even if you fail by one mark, it's a fail only, right? I don't evaluate this, you have to do self-evaluation, I will tell you how you need to evaluate. How you need to practice, what you need to practice. There are different conditions when you do this practice, which I'll tell you in the coming session. For the first company code, I'll tell you, you can see and then configure. Second company code, I will tell, don't look at any document, any material. You're not supposed to open any Excel sheet, you're not supposed to open any notebook, nothing, no recording, nothing will be played. It should be just you are logging into S A P and then you are using your. Hands, that's it. No reference. You'll have to work. If you get any error, you failed. If you are getting stuck, cutting an error, not understanding, it's okay, open the recording. Open your notes, open the Excel sheet, whatever you want to do, do it. But that's a red line, right? That's a red mark. Eliminated company code, you bring one more company code. Here, this is not like assignment you completed, whatever edit, right? It's like self-evaluation. Now you cannot cheat yourself, right? You're getting my point?
Sir, when we go to the S A P I D?
I'll tell you towards the end, okay? So you need to make sure these points are to be properly taken care, so that you get. Thorough experience, thorough understanding on the system wherein. There is no scope for any fear, there is no scope for any misunderstanding. There is no scope for feeling like I'm doing, but I don't know what I'm doing, will never come into your, in your mind, because you will understand. In these three company codes, so many things wherein you feel that, yes. Tell me what you want, I'll be creating it. You will come to that stage where you feel very comfortable working on the system. Then we will go to target number two. When I say then we will go to target number two, this target number two is majoritely my requirement, your setup. Meaning what I'll do in the target number two, I will be writing the requirements in the session, I'll be explaining my requirement. This is my company, this is how I wanted. Meaning, like a client, I'll tell you all the requirements, or like a senior consultant. Like a lead, like an architect, like a project manager, I'll give you instructions. Then, I'll give you the assignment accordingly, which you need to work independently. From the fourth company code, I don't show anything on the system, I'll only put everything on Excel sheet. I'll explain. Now with your understanding, you have to do it. Meaning I will tell you what you need to do, but I'll not show how you need to do it. Meaning, if your first three company codes, target number one is done properly. The fourth company code, which means target number two, based on the requirement. Based on the concept, based on the logic, you will be able to easily understand where you get practical understanding on the subject. Similarly, we will be doing assignments. You will be collecting different information which I will tell you, that is required for your interview, that is required for your project. Collectively, you will all be gathering lot of information. And we will be filtering out all the information in every session, because. It's not that I will show something, I will leave it to you, that okay, refer the recording to the practice, we don't do that. Everything will happen collectively. You're a regular practice, interview preparation, all inclusive. Meaning, there is no way you have backlogs, there is no way. You're, you know, having lot of gaps, breaks in between doesn't work out, you need to make out a time. As you know that. You will get one week, sorry, one day break every week, right? Sunday you are taking a break. You need to ensure that you plan your week in such a way that you're not having any backlogs, understood? We will go at a slower pace, it's not that we'll complete at a jet speed, that is not going to happen, we will go at a slower pace. In a way that you will be able to understand and you will be able to practice on your own. This is the primary focus. But the secondary focus is to ensure you are able to do it on a regular basis. Don't think that, okay, this week I am busy, from next week I will do it. Here and I will take rest, from January first I will do it. This will never happen, right? Correct or not? You pick the specific target, no more good day, every day is a good day, no Sunday, no Monday, you work on every day. Have your own target, make sure you know better how your target is on, all right? Reason why we spent initial thirty days to ensure, when we come to this baseline config target base. Now, none of you is completely new to it, right? Everybody has got at least basic idea, basic understanding, correct or not?
Correct, sir.
You don't need to put full effort, right? More than fifty percent, you're already aware. Am I right or wrong? Whatever you're going to do, more than fifty percent, you're already aware, it's just a little effort, but a structured effort, right? Proper effort. Disciplined, structured, proper effort is required to ensure you feel confident like a consultant. And then, you'll have to look at these company codes, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, three thousand one, nine thousand eight hundred. This nine thousand eight hundred company code is what I will create, but not in the session, okay? One thousand, two thousand, three thousand, three thousand one, who will create it?
We.
You will be creating it, meaning you will be creating until you feel that, yes, I am able to create a company code. Look at the trial balance without getting any error. Until you feel you are able to do it, you keep repeating it. If it takes five company code, you will be taking three thousand one, three thousand two, three thousand three, four, five. Depends on person to person, somebody may be taking. Three only, somebody may be taking four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, possible or not? But every mistake is a learning, right? When you're making a mistake now, you create the second one, but not that I made a mistake now, let me take a break. I'll sleep for some time, I'll get up again. You, by the time you get up, by the time you come back from your break and all, you will forget what mistake you made. Agree or not? You will end up making same mistake again. So don't do it. If you get an error, fix the error immediately. If you wanted to take a break, write down, I got error, I got mistake here, I made a wrong setup here, write down the way you understand it. In an Excel sheet, in a book, write down, then you take a break, but when you come back, please make sure you don't make the same mistake. If you're making the same mistake, then your practice itself is a mistake. The way, the way you're practicing, the way you're configuring, it's all wrong. If you're getting a problem, you need to know why problem is coming. Forget about the problem. You think why the problem is coming? If it is the first time, good, you're, it's a learning, but it is the second time, same problem. Then it's not a learning, it's a mistake, it's a problem, you need to identify, why am I getting the same error again? Somewhere something went wrong, where I made a mistake, you have to identify and then fix it accordingly. So that as you move forward, whenever you redo this configuration, for sure. On your fingertips, you will configure the system, without even looking at anything, just like that, you will configure. Without even getting a single error at any given point of time, correct or not? That confidence is required for that, you have to build very strong basics. Once these are done, when you enter into the target number two, wherein I will be giving the requirement. And based on the requirement, you will be configuring a company code from documentation onward. First company code until the trial balance, everybody will prepare a document. All the projected documents, whatever we prepare as a consultant, I will make you prepare this document on your own. I don't make any document, I'll just to show, give input, instruction. Show a little sample, just one or two screenshot, then you will be making your own document, based on your company code. And first three company codes, what I told, dummy company codes, right? Only to get an experience hands-on, understood, right? The fourth company code, whatever you create, fourth company code, whatever you configure, maybe from fourth onward. From fourth onward, you should have another three company codes, how many you should have?
Three.
Three.
Another three. First three is only to get hands-on experience, next three is to get conceptual understanding. Because sometimes there are some topics you not understand in one go, right? Now you have overall how many company codes?
Six.
Six. Along with me, while I'm with you, you will all be working with the six company codes. Am I clear?
Sir, would you be showing the, the configuration that we did in the past again or?
Yeah, yeah, we will do, we will do, we'll do everything. Everything we will do again, understanding every field one by one. Now it will be a slow-paced configuration. Whatever we did so far is only to get you a feel, to get you a comfort, confidence that this is how FICO works. Now, to make you practically get a hands-on experience, now this is how I will work in FICO, that's what you will experience now.
So you will show first three like again and then from fourth, uh, fourth.
No, no, I will show only one, I'll create only one company code. Based on that, you will do the remaining, the three company code. Target one, target two is your target, not my target. I'll make you understand the configuration, I'll explain every screen, every field, the way you need to configure. Accordingly, you will be practicing, because when I, when you practice. It should not be just a practice, it should be in a structured way, right? That's where we're writing, target one, target two, according to which you will be working in the system, meaning I'll give you instruction. The way you need to work, you don't need to do anything on your own, everything I'll tell you what, how you need to do what. Accordingly, you need to do it in a proper way. And it's all self-evaluated practice, meaning I'll tell what you need to practice, what you need to do, till what extent you need to do. And what should be the outcome, how you need to verify, validate whether you did it right or wrong, everything I'll show you. But it is not that I'm not going to evaluate, you will be in a position to evaluate whether what you did is right or wrong, understood?
Sir, from first company code onwards, we'll be configuring three systems, sir, development, quality and production.
That, yeah, that I'll show. Once we start the regular configuration, probably from tomorrow we will start. Not probably, tomorrow onward, we will be getting into the system, understanding every syst, every setting. From tomorrow, you will be understanding how to install S A P, how to add a connection. All the prerequisite that you need to understand before you log into S A P, everything I'll make you understand in detail in the tomorrow's session. Right from installing S A P on your system, the way you go to G Y, the way you go to Fury, how you login. What is landscape, how it will look like in a project, everything we will practically experience in the tomorrow's session. Meaning your actual practical learning begins from today. Clear it?
Sir, since this is a training server, is that okay if we all of us create only thousand, two thousand, three thousand?
No, no, just an example, I'll tell you. How you love to create it, you will make your own naming convention.
Okay, fine, thanks.
Okay? Now, once all these are done, you feel, you should feel that, yes, you're improving on a daily basis. And you're doing better from one company code to another company code, so that. By the time we complete baseline configuration level, we will be entering where business process.
Yes, sir.
The moment we enter business process, I want everybody to transform in such a way that. If I give the requirement, I want you to work independently and get me the solution, I want you to be at that level. Understood, right? It's like, I'll make you understand the process, concept, scenario, then even if I don't configure the system. I see that, okay, if you're able to get the configuration, if you're able to configure on your own. Provided if I give my requirement, this is how you get scenarios in a project, right? Client will never show the config, right or wrong?
Yes, sir.
Correct, sir.
Your senior will never show the config, right? Your lead will never show the config, your manager will never show the config. Nobody will show the config, everybody will talk about what, requirement, problem, issue, error, ticket, C R, yes, no? This is how I will make you practically work. For certain things, simple, simple things, not complicated. So that you get a feel, right? Yes, if this is the situation, this is the problem. And all this will come into the picture only when you're able to execute one basic cycle. When I say basic cycle. When we get into business process, I will make you configure the system, execute one cycle into one. I'll make you configure the system, execute the cycle into one. Later on, I will start giving you the small, small requirements, a small, small assignment. I'll give some assignment, which will not work the way I want. You got my point, right? I'll give a requirement. Some requirements, we will collectively configure in the class, but we will configure in a. Incorrect way, so that the requirement will not be fulfilled, it will give the error, or it will not be as per what we wanted. Then we will collectively see, yes, system is working, but this is not how we wanted. So system is not working as per the requirement, in this situation, how will you fix it? Then we will start collectively thinking, okay, if this is the situation, this is how we need to move forward. This is where we need to check, this is how you need to test. Where you need to rectify the configuration, where you need to check if the requirement is correct or not. Where you need to go back to the user, where you don't need to go back to the user, where you need to. Google it, where you need to use charge A P T or different other sources, I'll make you practically fill it on the screen. And then similarly, I'll give you different requirement, where you will do what I tell, but you'll not achieve what I tell. You will do whatever I tell you, instruct you, but the result, whatever I want, won't come. Meaning, you cannot say you worked on the requirement, because I'll give you requirement in such a way. Which will not work the way it should work, correct or not? So for sure, you cannot tell assignment is completed, right? Can you tell? Going forward, you cannot tell assignment is completed, because I will give you assignment which will give you wrong result. So if you completed the assignment, you will tell, I tried, but it is not working. Got my point?
Yes, sir.
Then you'll understand, if you work on the assignment, you will realize it is not working. This is giving a different result, I'm getting an error. Meaning I'll give you assignments where you will start thinking. You'll be getting the assignment where you will be starting to think like a consultant. And then you will start thinking to give a solution. Okay, if this is not working, what alternative I can try? Is the requirement correct? Is my configure correct? Did I do the right testing? Did I take the right test case? Is there any issue which is coming from the technical point of view? Is there any integrated things? Is there any? Cross-functional setting and all, meaning you will be thinking from a different perspective. All these things, when you're able to understand, when you're able to feel practically on the system. You need to ensure, or you will be realizing that, yes, now the way I'm practicing, the way I'm looking at the system, is a little different. This feel is what you have to get. This feel is what you have to get while I'm with you. Meaning there is no way that you will feel that okay, first let me complete this, after the course I will sit, spend one month and all. Nothing, don't, you have to sit, create, practice six company codes while I'm with you. Clear, everyone? There is a six company code in a structured way, first three company code are trial and error to get. Confidence, to feel familiar with the screen, T code, all this kind of thing, but from four, five, six is to be executed full cycle. If you create fourth company code, from the fourth company code until you generate the balance sheet, everything must be in the same company code, all the topics. Your G L, A P, A R, everything must be configured in the same company code, don't change company code in between. When I said don't change company code in between, right from the beginning, whatever you create, whatever you post, whatever you do. Should be structured or you can post left and right.
Should be structured.
It should be structured, you cannot do whatever you want left and right because if you do that way, something will work, something will not work. At the end, when you come towards the closure of your topics and all, you feel that yes, my company code, whatever I'm using from the beginning. Is not helping me now, you will arrive at a situation where you have to create a fresh company code. It's a pain point for anyone, right? You got my point?
Yes, sir.
Make sure when you're creating a company code from the beginning, until your complete FICO practice, it should be the same company code. Meaning whatever you configure, whatever you post, whatever you see should be structured, that's where you can see full picture in a full, in a single company code. To ensure that this is achieved, we are taking three company codes as target number one. Wherein you're getting hands-on experience, you're making mistake, you're realizing mistake. Understanding solution and then from fourth company code, whatever you create, all the four, all the company code from fourth onward. Or are all structured company code without any mistake with proper conceptual, logical understanding. For everything you know, what is the business requirement in a project, how these things will work, how you will work, how you get the requirement. If you get any problem, what is the solution, what is the approach, what is the logic? Unknown things, what is your way forward, on unknown thing, what is your way forward, you should be clear enough. Confident enough to move forward independently should be your target. Clear, right?
Yes, sir.
Alright, let me stop this recording now.